I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, November 6, 2019, at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. All commissioners are present. And with that, if we can move into the public comment section where if anybody in the audience has anything that's not on the agenda tonight, if you want to come forward, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody in the audience signed up to speak tonight? It does not look like that is the case. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for September 18th and October 2nd, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes. Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 18th and October 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move into new business. It looks like we don't have the council liaison here, but Michael, it looks like you have something for us tonight to maybe talk about the scheduling for later in the year?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michael.
Also, double checking, I think we also have minutes from October 2nd for approval this evening? I thought it was just, I thought the motion was just on September.
I think it was for both sets of minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My mistake, I didn't hear that. Yes, thank you. So we did want to talk a little bit about the schedule for December and January. December, we currently are scheduled for the 4th and the 18th, that would be the first and third Wednesdays of that month. We have a few items that would be coming to you in December. Some additional discussion on the downtown preservation work, which you're going to get an introduction to at your next meeting on November 20th. Continuation, most likely, on downtown public space. We also have the bylaws still that we're going to bring back to you, and then also preparation for the 2020 docket to begin that discussion with the commission. So we're wondering if you wanted to have one meeting in December or both meetings, we can do it either way. And if you wanted just one meeting, what date you might want to have that on? If the 4th would be your preference, or if you would prefer to do it on the 11th, or cancel the 18th? I guess that's kind of what generated this, is whether you want to meet the Wednesday, the week before Christmas. Then in January, your first meeting would be on New Year's Day. And staff is not planning on being here that day, so, and I'm assuming you wouldn't want to be either. So we also want to talk about what you'd like to do with your January meetings. If you want to just do, we could do one meeting in January, that would be the 15th, or we could schedule two meetings and then pick which Wednesdays you would like to do those.
Commissioner Kiernan?
I'm not available December 4th.
Okay. Yes, and we do have that on the record, thank you. And that's the only absence I have so far for December 4th.
I'm available on the 4th and 18th, I'm not available on the 11th, as far as moving the dates.
Is everybody else available on those, on those dates? Okay. Now, I'm curious out of staff direction with regards to the two meeting dates, do you think we need to have two meetings? Is there enough, is it better to have two meetings, or just to have a single meeting?
Um...
Because I don't know what's on the, what's coming up, you said the...
We have the downtown public space continuation of that discussion.
Right.
We also have the continuation, or the next step in the discussion on the downtown preservation.
Correct.
And the historic resources inventory, the bylaws, and then the 2020 docket discussion. The docket discussion technically probably could slide, well, bylaws and the docket could probably slide to January if you wanted to do that. Those are not as time critical. We would like to at least get started on the discussion with the docket, but we might even be able to slip that in and let the bylaws slide until January. So we'd have three items, we could, we could do those, I think, in one meeting.
Do any of the commissioners have any feelings one way or the other, whether to have one or two meetings? Oh, Dave Boyd, did you have a...
Well, I just wanted to weigh in on the, if we do go from the study session on the historic resources, downtown historic resources, that going from November 20th, the week before Thanksgiving, to a meeting on December 4th, it would be a bit of a challenge. So it would be better to do that either later in December, or that's also not necessarily time critical, could slide into January if necessary.
So you're saying it's a pretty quick turnaround to have a meeting on the 20th, and then a meeting on the 4th on the same topic?
Especially with the holiday.
Yeah, for that particular item, yes.
Okay.
That would be on both. But again, as Dave said, that one item could also go to January, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm available any of those dates in December and the dates in January, so I would just leave it up to you, staff, or the rest of the commission, to what's best for the workload.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm kind of going to look to guidance for you all on whether I can meet on both those dates, or just fit them into one, but...
Okay. So what I would suggest at this point is we will plan on the 4th, and we'll work on an agenda for that, understanding the tight timeline on that, so we may rearrange things a little bit as far as the January meeting. And then we can put something together for the 18th, if we're going to have a quorum for that, we'll plan on both of those for now, and then see what we need to do in January, whether we need two meetings or one, because we'll be looking at the workload for that as well.
Great. That sounds, sounds good. Unless anybody else has any other comments on that? Doesn't look like it.
Okay, we'll plan on the 4th and the 18th.
Okay. Great. December 4th, okay. With that, we will finish with new business. We'll go ahead and move into the public hearings for this evening, and I guess the first will be on the downtown public space code amendments, which is continued from September 18th. And it will be led by Senior Planner Dave Boyd on the stop.
Thank you, and good evening. Just have a short presentation to highlight some of the issues that we would like to get some additional feedback from you. I'll remind you that we continued from September 18th to tonight because we wanted to take this item to the Development Services Stakeholders Advisory Group, which we did on October 23rd. So that's covered in the packet, some of the feedback that we got from that, and also other feedback we've gotten in the intervening time. So for starters, I just wanted to go back to the, kind of the comprehensive plan portion of the downtown plan, and the basis for this requirement in the community vision, which calls for a sequence of unfolding spaces that inspire people to walk and linger in the center of the city. So that's, that's the reason, the main reason behind this. It also serves other purposes. It provides a break in the more dense building pattern that we have in the downtown, provides breathing room, open space, as well as open spaces, or public spaces that can be, can be accessed and actively used. I also wanted to just give an update. This is the public space that was required at the Mercantile Building, and I've shown pictures of this previously. We've since been following up with them on some items in their plans that hadn't been installed yet. And there's still one, one piece to come. But there were some furnishings on the Upper Plaza that have been installed now, and as you can see in the, in the picture on the upper left. On the center portion of the plaza, they've proposed, they had proposed a sign, a public plaza sign, and we've asked them to include some interpretive, an interpretive element there, similar to what was done at the addition apartments, showing Bothell's first schoolhouse, which stood on the east end of that site originally. And then on the, the lower portion of this, the western portion of this, there is a, they've added a Japanese maple that was called for in the plans, and a small sculpture, which is very hard to see. Oops. Now I've done it. There we go. There we go. A pair of geese in the, in the corner there. So tonight, the main focus is on the code requirements, whether we want to make some adjustments in the amount of public space that's required. And I'm, I've got these two comparison charts between Bothell and, and some of our surrounding cities, which show that Bothell does require more than, than other cities do. And, and some of these percentages, we can come back and take a closer look at as we get into the discussion. But other cities have percentages of the gross residential floor area, as opposed to a fixed figure per, per unit. Some also have side area percentages. These are comparison of multifamily code provisions, and these are provisions from urban center provisions that are probably more, more comparable to downtown Bothell. And then just to, again, to illustrate this, these are some images that you've seen before of a couple of sites that have raised this issue. The POP, the diagram on the lower left, shows the amount of public space that would be, that would be required for the number of units and the amount of commercial space in this building that was nearing a third of the site, about 30% of the site. And also, we've looked at this proposal for the block, the north side of 185th, between 104th and Ross Road. This was an early, earlier submittal, where we made some suggestions about how their open space plan could be expanded to meet, meet the requirement. And then at the last meeting, this is Exhibit 3 in your packet, Harbor Homes provided this site plan showing a revision that does some of what, what we suggested, but still left them short of the required public space. So, and this one, what they're showing is about 20% of the side area, and about 60% of the, what would be required, or actually closer to 50% of what would be required. So we feel that there's still some areas where they could expand this without necessarily reducing their unit count with some adjustments to the design. But these projects have informed the proposals that we've made to date. So the comments received to date relative to these issues, and also the fee-in-lue provisions, are to redo, just to reduce the amount that we require per unit. And in the 9, in the September 18th packet, we did provide in that, those potential code amendments, a reduction by about 60 to 67% across the board there. That's not quite as much as some, some of the requests that we've received, but we think it is a reasonable adjustment. There's also been a suggestion since then, and in some of your, your, the exhibits, of a potential cap of, on, on the overall side area that can be required as public space. We've put in this draft of the code 20% as a, as a, an amount for consideration and for discussion. Again, that's not, that's, that's more than, than what has been requested, but we thought it was a good number to, to use for the discussion. We've also heard a request to reduce the threshold for dividing required public space. As the code stands right now, it has to be in one space unless the overall amount required is more than 3,000 square feet. We aren't proposing any reduction to date, or we haven't included that in the code amendments, but that's certainly an item that we would like direction on from, from the commission. There, we had, in the September 19th, or 18th packet, we provided a thresholds that only smaller projects could use the fee-in-lue. What we heard back was for larger projects, there still may be a need to use a fee-in-lue, and maybe that could be limited to, and so the proposal here is to allow larger projects to use the fee-in-lue for up to 10% by right, and then up to 25% of their total required public open space with director approval. That was another comment that as they're going through feasibility studies, not knowing for sure whether they're, they would be able to get any, be able to use fee-in-lue without director's approval, interjects an amount of uncertainty in a project. So, and then finally, we did get comments that perhaps we should exempt smaller infill projects, and I haven't included that in the, in the potential code amendments yet, but I would like, we would like to get your, your feedback on, on that notion. So with that, I'd welcome any clarifying question or comments on the presentation and what was put in your packet tonight. And then you can open it up for any public testimony. And then we would like discussion and direction, and any additional analysis desired on these five issues. The reductions to the amount of public space required, the limits, also incorporating a limit in the percentage of side area for required public space, limits to the use of in-lue fees, and whether you would like us to explore adjusting the limits for splitting public open space. And finally, if you're interested in having us explore and include in the next round a waiver for public space requirement for smaller projects. And we do anticipate that you'll be continuing this hearing to December, and I think with the discussion...
Fourth.
Earlier, we can bring this back on the 4th, this one.
Okay.
Because we do have some time to work on that between now and then. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Great, so we'll go ahead and, the commission can ask questions to Dave here, and after that, we can ask for public comment on this particular topic. So if any of the commissioners have any questions for Dave?
And I did, and we can go back to any of those illustrations, and I've got some of the slides from previous available to here, too, if you, if you want to look at specific projects.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Dave. Commissioner Kiernan?
So, starting with the last first, I guess, how would we define smaller projects?
The, as far as a threshold for...
Yeah, for waiving.
Fee-in-lue, I, I set that as projects that would require 3,000 square feet of public space, or, or more. That may or may not be an appropriate threshold for a waiver. I would, I would tend to say that a waiver might be appropriate for a much smaller, a project that would require public open space of 500 feet or less, or...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a significant benefit for a little tiny postage stamp spaces. And we saw one a while back of the medical facility of Main Street near the, near the post office.
Correct.
Which is called a public space, and I don't know what, what that costs, and as far as the benefit received, but I don't think the benefit is real high. So waiver in small projects, I think, has some merit to really encourage those projects to go forward.
And of course, the, the other option that they have is the fee-in-lue, but we have heard a request for, for waiving them for those smaller projects, especially since those tend to be...
Economics get tougher as it gets smaller.
Tighter margins, yes.
Yeah.
I don't see any other questions at this time for Dave, so we will go ahead and entertain. Anybody from the audience who wants to speak on this topic? I don't have a list, I don't know if anybody signed up, we'll see if we have anybody signed up.
No, no signups.
No signups. But anybody wanting to come and speak on the downtown public space code amendments, please come forward, state your name for the record, and please hold your comments to three minutes.
Roger Bilonich, 22020, 17th Avenue, Southeast, Bothell. My comments are essentially impromptu, I'm here for the, for another part of the hearing, but it seems to me that rather than have little pieces of property set aside for recreational purposes, it would be better to have a mitigation fee, which would be collected as a mitigation, as they do in wetland mitigation, to create a park of, with a real facility to it, and rather than little patches around the city. And it seems to me that that would be better planning, to fund parks that everybody could use, as opposed to lost pieces within these developments. I saw this, the developer struggle in Canyon Park Business Center, where they have a townhouse project, by a very great developer, Toll, and they struggled to define a little piece back in the corner. And I don't get what served, what purpose it served, as opposed to really creating a mitigation fee to enhance or buy a real park property, that, that the whole community can use, as opposed to these isolated pieces. That's, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay, I see no other hands or nods of the head, so we will go ahead and continue to discuss this topic amongst ourselves. Let's see. I'm trying to figure out the best, yes, Dave?
I wanted to bring up one thing. We've talked about this in previous sessions, but just for the benefit of the, of the commenter, the, these are in addition to our parks and open space impact fees, which do go towards a pool that would create larger parks throughout the city. This is a different thing that's only required in the downtown currently, that really is intended to provide those small gathering spaces off the sidewalk, and, and, but we do recognize that, especially with the smaller projects, there is a need for either a fee-in-lue or, and/or a waiver, so.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I guess we can, we will be continuing this meeting, continuing this to December, but I don't, maybe we can, I don't know if we want to kind of go through these, kind of quickly go through these pages to give any guidance, or does anybody else have any particular questions with regards to the downtown space code amendments in the draft?
I've got a question. Thanks, Dave, for the presentation. Your last question here on smaller projects having a waiver for the requirement, I just think that infill development in a conceptual way is supposed to be taking advantage of every square inch of the space in the property that's being used. And I think a waiver, as opposed to just in-lue fee, could make these sorts of projects pencil out a lot more, and I, it just makes a lot more conceptual sense to have waivers for really small projects, additions, and small incremental development, rather than making them have to pay for something that wouldn't have been, in the first place, really usable on a small site. So I kind of echo Commissioner Kiernan's comment earlier, but I think that we should really pursue a waiver for these small, really small projects.
Thank you. Commissioner Kev?
Dave, could you go back a slide? There we go. One of the items that you brought up was on the larger parcels, maybe 3,000 square feet of dedicated public space. I understand that having ambivalent code language, where you don't know if you're going to get director approval, can cause some angst in the development community, but can you expand a little bit on, I guess, actual instances where we run into showstoppers with regards to a large site being developed and the amount of open space it's required?
I can't say that we've had a showstopper yet, because we've, we have found ways to, to work with developers to accommodate projects. The, the example that I gave, I guess, the slide before, this is one where we've heard that, that uncertainty of whether, whether a open space proposal, or a fee-in-lue for part of the open space proposal, could be an impediment for going through with, you know, completing the property purchase and, and moving forward with this project. But that, that's, that was the, the comment that generated that question for you.
Okay.
Well, we've have, so we've accommodated requests for, in a number of ways. The 104 was struggling to fit their public open space on their site, since the same developer was doing Six Oaks and had some opportunities there. We allowed the transfer on the POP site. They're doing it in two phases, and the second phase didn't qualify for the split, so we did allow them to do their public space, apply the public space requirement to the combined project, Phase 1, Phase 2. So those are some of the ways that we've accommodated some of the challenges that developers have brought to us.
Okay. I think just in general, when you compare the, the chart of all the different municipalities, Seattle, Redmond, you know, we're pretty aggressive in our open space. But in general, some of the larger sites, I think the intent was to reduce the massing, kind of open up the city a little bit. So I would be more in favor of Commissioner Kiernan's suggestion on the smaller sites, where, yeah, if we get 10 feet of open space, does that really do anything for the city and the public as a whole, versus trying to make our focus on some of the larger contiguous sites?
And with that, I think, so, we have five bullet points here, or things to address. It sounds like the group is, with regards, is there anybody here who doesn't feel that we should be waiving, waiving it for small infill developments? Is there anybody here who would have a problem with that?
I would respond to that, but I wouldn't answer that question directly. I, you know, thanks for the presentation, I appreciate the, the additional information, particularly with the signage. We had a lot of conversation about that last time, and I was pleased with what you brought back on that. As far as the, the size of an exempt property, I think that if we're going to consider that, we need to first determine what we're going to have our minimum be. I mean, if it's 90 square feet per unit, I mean, that's a 30-plus unit development that wouldn't be required to have any public open space, and, and maybe that's okay, but at 150 square feet where we currently stand, it's, it's far fewer units. So I think that once we have that determined, then whether we're going to do 3,000 feet, or 2,000 feet, or, or, or more or less, would be the more appropriate time to have that conversation. So I'd rather see us attack it from that direction or that angle. So I'd rather see us attack it from that direction or that angle.
That sounds good. Sounds appropriate to me. We'll kind of hold off on that until we address some of the initial items. Commissioner Kiernan?
So a question on process. Comment was made that the uncertainty is a significant, is a factor for developers. And we're talking about the potential for the 10% by right, up to 25% by director approval. What point in the process would that happen? And to ask that another way, how much money does a developer need to spend to have an application ripe enough to make the determination of 10, 25, or somewhere in between?
So that should happen early in the process during the site plan review. So that would be part of their site plan design would be where they would be providing that public space and how much they would be providing. So they would determine at that point if they needed to get approval to pay a fee and lieu up to 25%, if that's what we ended up applying in this case. So it would happen fairly early in the process. Unfortunately, that hasn't always been the case, but that's something we would make sure was built in to how we would approach this.
So they would have to come in, demonstrate, let's say the developer believes that or desires the 25% fee and lieu. So they would, a scenario would be they'd come in and say, look, this is what 10% does to us. It does to the economics of the project. Therefore, this is an alternate scenario at 25% or possibly 20% that we're asking you to receive, to approve.
Yes, and I think we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. You know, where is it located? Is it adjacent to other types of public space like this? Does it help to add to the network, or is it really not contributing to the network? You know, what are the site constraints? There may be some unique aspects to the site that we would consider as part of that. There'd be several factors that we would look at, you know. And we'd also take a look at the site plan and see, you know, are there ways that they could accommodate the full requirement or the 90% or whatever that might be, or something in between? So it's an opportunity for us to work with the applicant to find a solution that meets the city's goals as well as makes the project feasible for them.
And then in calculating the fee, the cost of the developer, what's the process you go through for that?
The process that we've had has been to, the idea is that the fee should equal the cost of providing the space, since it is a fee in lieu of that. So the formula is the assessed value of the land and plus a factor for, a square foot factor for developing the open space. And of course, construction costs vary as well. So we've had to make some adjustments, and we're still trying to find the sweet spot in that and have a fee that is also more predictable for applicants. One thing I wanted to say about the 10% by right is the part of this that was intended to address the uncertainty. So that a developer, even before site plan review, even at the pre-app stage or when they're doing their feasibility study, would know that they could get that without director's approval. If they needed more, then they'd know that they needed to get a little bit deeper into the process.
Thank you.
So I guess I don't know the best way is to kind of go through here, but I guess if nobody has any specifics with regards to the draft, or actually, you know, let's do that. Let's go through, let's go through the pages just really briefly. That way, if anything comes out, anything jumps out at anybody. So on the draft downtown public space code amendments on pages one and two, is there anybody who have any questions with regards to that? And it could be any questions with regards to the potential amounts of space that we're reducing to be required? And it could be for a particular zone?
And if I could just clarify one thing, I noticed just one word here. It says reduced by 60 to 70, 67%. It's actually reduction to 60 to 67%. So we're not reducing it by two-thirds. We're reducing it to.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's an important.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and pages three and four. I have a quick question with regards to landscaping on page four. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm reading it, and I don't quite understand the last sentence. But it says designated public spaces shall employ trees and living ground cover where possible and a mix of hardscape and container plantings where overbuilt areas as appropriate to use. So I'm trying to understand, like, is it?
Yeah, I can look at that, rewording that to be clear. But some of the public space has been provided over constructed areas. So the opportunity to actually put in trees or sizable trees is limited. Often, they're going over underground garages that extend the full width of the site, but so.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for taking another look at that. Does anybody else have any questions on three or four?
I have a comment on the residential requirement. So we've seen petitions from developers, and we've looked at exhibit three that show that their plan's not working with 150 square feet. So we're proposing 90 square feet, and their plan's still not working. So we're looking at, I think, about a 40,000, 38,000 square foot piece of property. And even at 90 square feet, we're looking at about 6,200 square feet of open space. So we're turning something with no open space into something, what, their proposal would be 6,200 square feet. So 20% of that lot is going to be public open space? To me, that seems like a big win regardless of it not meeting that 90 or 150. So I know that we're dropping this to 60 to 70% of what we have now. But I would suggest go further. It's not a huge development, and it's a huge amount of open space that we don't currently have. So if we're going to change these numbers, let's change them to numbers that work.
You're talking about reducing further?
Yeah, unless I'm missing something with these numbers. But my backup African math, it shows that we're, yeah, if you don't mind. So is, no, the next one, please.
Okay.
So we're looking at, their proposal shows 6,200 square feet of open space. On a lot, is it about 40,000 square feet, 38,000?
I believe so.
So if we're going to get six out of 40, that's a pretty good number. I mean, given that they're going vertical with this development, that's the reason they have all of the units. I certainly wouldn't want to see a property developed at that location with 14,000 square feet of open space, that's public open space. And it's worth noting, in case the commission, and I'm sure they did notice it, this is in addition to privately provided open space. So it's not like they're putting this big building there and not giving people who live there a space to recreate outside. This is addition, in addition to that, right? They're going to have a rooftop deck and some balconies.
Yeah, the private outdoor space has generally been provided in balconies, rooftop decks, in some cases stoop, ground-level stoops, but that's correct. I guess where I'm, it's kind of, the genesis of the numbers is that, so here is a diagram of that site that does comply with the current requirements. And we understand that this would reduce the capacity. We think that there's something in between that and this proposal that could work, that wouldn't reduce the unit count necessarily. So that's where we came up with the two-thirds. But there have been suggestions that it should go to, you know, that we should cut it in half. But the other part of it is that putting a cap, adding a cap of 20% of the lot area or 15%, whatever it is, would again provide some relief, particularly for denser projects that are going vertical and having a higher number of units.
I was going to mention the cap as well. So that may be the other tool that we can use to help put some parameters around this and some predictability. I think from a staff standpoint, we want to spend, one of the reasons we're asking to continue this is we really want to spend some more time on this to make sure that we get it right. You know, because the goals are good goals. The mechanics of it have been a challenge. So we want to make sure that we don't just go too far in one direction or the other, that we get something that's going to be workable all the way around. The other thing I wanted to mention, I think this is something Commissioner Cave alluded to in his comments a bit ago, and that has to do with the Balkan scale of the buildings. So that is the other, one of the other purposes of this is to make sure that we're not creating large bulky buildings, you know, in addition to creating that public space where people can, was it linger and wander and linger through downtown? I don't have the quite the words down, but you get the idea. To make sure that we're also doing that. So one of the other ideas that we've been kicking around as staff is how can we incorporate that, you know, the building architecture into this discussion? And it may be that one of the ways we can reduce the requirement would be through the design of the building and articulation or something like that, maybe give some credit along those lines. But again, staff needs a little more time to take a look at that and see how that would work. But what I'm hearing from the commission is you want to see us figure out a sweet spot here, which is where we're trying to get to.
Yeah, if you don't mind going back to that last drawing, is that the drawing, this one? Is this the one that shows the 14,000, the requirement based on 150 square feet per unit?
Yeah, at this point, they were proposing 100 units, so it was actually 15,000.
Okay. And now they're proposing?
95.
95? Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Commissioner Kiernan?
So a couple of comments. One is, I'm not sure, actually, let me rephrase that. I don't think it's a good thing if we put together a requirement that the developer ends up reducing the number of units in order to meet it. If we're looking to get density downtown, that's going counter to it. So that gives me some concern. Your comment about, excuse me, architectural interest, I think is a very good one. And I really do, would appreciate seeing how that would be incorporated. There's value there. And these spaces, you know, when we talk about public space, I think some people go to, well, it's a park I'm going to play in. But it's not always that. Some of it, and I look at Six Oaks, nobody's playing along the Oaks, but that open space gives you benefit by softening the whole effect. And I think that's a good thing. If we can get there other ways, I think that's great. I like the cap. I think that's a good way to go. Now, if they get to the cap, could that be by a mixture of either the space or fee and lieu?
I think that's something we'd have to take a closer look at.
Okay, I'd be interested in how that goes as well. I mean, if it's 20%, if they hit the space, great. If they hit like 10% of the space and then some of the fee, we need to think about that.
We want to see how that plays out.
Yeah, the intent was that that would be a cap on the space, and then fee and lieu would be separate from that.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't clear to me.
Just out of curiosity, Dave, live up the hill from this property. So this is, this used to be, or I guess it still is, like four or five different properties, right?
Five single-family homes.
Yeah, yeah. So let's just say that you hadn't gotten this proposal and a developer. I mean, could you, how does it work if, like, you wanted to break this up into like three different developments? How does that pan out with regards to the requirement? Because they were waiving for smaller ones. So if this is broken into three?
I mean, we don't regulate the size of developments, I mean, the number of properties that they can accumulate for the development. So it would be broken up if, you know, this project doesn't go through and the property owners wind up selling separately. And so, you know, could, somebody could buy, probably more likely than three would be two. Somebody buys three of the lots and somebody else buys.
Okay, okay. Interesting.
One other thing in terms of, we're certainly not intending to use this public space requirement to reduce the density. And in almost all cases, the number of units that a developer puts on a site is controlled by the number of parking spaces that they can reasonably provide. And then, and then the, how you massage the building form to meet the open space requirement is a kind of a separate exercise. But it certainly could, like I said, that once you start carving out areas that would be units, then that could enter into that, so.
And I didn't mean to imply that was the intent, but sometimes actions have effects beyond their intent.
Yes.
We need to be aware of that.
We're always looking for unintended consequences.
Yes.
Let's see, and then I guess as long as we're there, anything on pages five and six? And then pages seven, and then there was a letter submitted.
I'm one page behind at all times. So Dave, quick question about the public signage. I noticed your example showed quiet hours and not hours that that little parklet area near the Merck Building would be closed. Is that because we can't regulate the open and closed hours of public space that's privately owned? Or was that just a coincidence that it said quiet hours?
We could. We don't currently have, well, actually, currently, the code says that these public spaces need to be open 24 hours a day. And in some cases, we've heard that that didn't seem reasonable. And we've talked, and the potential code amendments do put limit, I think it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So this development that's going in ahead of that, or has been permitted ahead of that, basically suggested not limiting the hours of use, but just adding the quiet hours. And we thought that was reasonable.
Okay, and Commissioner Kiernan is now pointing out page four, where it shows we changed the 24 hours to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
So my follow-up on that, it says shall be open to the public from at least 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Would it be open to the private residents beyond that time?
Certainly could be.
It could be, okay.
Building management issue, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bit of a perhaps peripheral question. On the, on page five, we talk about video monitoring. So is that just, it's kind of there? Is there any preservation of the video? Is there any sharing of it? Just one of these where the effect that you have assigned it's under video monitoring gets you an impact? Any way that's regulated or used?
The area that we've discussed that with development is the POP, which isn't open yet, so it's hard to gauge it. But they proposed, and we approved, a pathway that went around the side, up the side and around the back of the building. And one of the concerns was, we wanted, we encouraged them to make sure that there was passive surveillance of that area, that there was eyes on that space so that it would be defensible space, but also that they install some video cameras. Just, so those are the kinds of instances where we might request that level of surveillance.
But it, so it's at their discretion, whether it's just kind of a continuous loop and every 24 hours it's recorded over, or where they store them and storage costs money, but.
Yeah, we haven't.
You haven't gone to that level to think about it.
It's, we're looking at it more as a deterrent than a.
Data gathering.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I had a comment on page four. In part D, it says privately owned designated public spaces shall be maintained in good condition. I just wanted to reiterate, good condition is relative. And would this be? And would this be something that would be enforced via public outcry?
It would be a code enforcement issue, and for the most part, code enforcement is done on a complaint basis. Although if if we notice, or a safety, if we notice a safety issue, we will proactively enforce code violations.
To what extent have the existing downtown open spaces been maintained in terms of the complaint status?
We haven't received any complaints that I know of about maintenance of these spaces. And my personal experiences, they have been well maintained.
Thanks.
Great, and just, and also, oh, Commissioner Hampton.
No, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just, before I forget, I want to thank the citizen who sent in the letter, very nice letter with regards to some guidance for us, too. And I don't know how you, I do not know how you'd ever craft a green fee and lieu kind of format, but I think that's a really interesting future conversation possibility. Go ahead.
I guess I just want to ask, are you looking for anything else for us, or are we just discussing this and then going to move it to the next meeting, or?
Oh, then we're just going to go through the the five and then give, we're just, I was just chatting about it and then, yeah.
Yeah, and if there's any additional questions that you want us to look at more closely, in addition to these five, if there are other things that you want us to look at, we'd like some direction on that.
Analysis, if if it would help to have more comparison of, you know, percent of site area that's that's been provided in the projects to date, that sort of thing.
Since my mic's still on, I think it would be great to see some, some, we've seen the examples of, like, such as the Merck and POP, but I'm not sure if we've seen the actual square footage versus the numbers that we got out of those sites. And just to kind of help us understand the scale of it, because it's really what we're going to be changing with the 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 difference between 150 and whatever we decide is what the scale of that open space is. Maybe just a couple of examples of of things that have been built or proposed would be good.
And I think I've heard feedback, direction on the the first three items. We haven't really talked about whether the commission feels that there's a need to adjust the limits for splitting public space. That was one of the the comments, I think it was exhibit four suggested that.
And that was what I was hoping, I was going to get to that one, seek clarification for. So like, can you go to that Ross Road? I mean, this is the example we have. So when you're saying, so there's some small pieces of, so are, when you say breaking it up, were you talking about the total amount and how how much you could break up that total requirement? And how many spaces you could break that in? Because it's broken up into quite a few places, which isn't necessarily bad or good, it just is.
Yeah, so the current requirement says that you can only split it if you if you're required to have at least 3,000. And at that point, there needs to be at least one 2,000 square foot space and no spaces under 1,000. So here, they do have a space that's.
There's a couple under 1,000 over there.
Sorry, you're not, you're not able to see the the laser pointer from there. And then this other space here is over 1,000. Now, they they show some smaller open spaces here that wouldn't qualify because they're less than 1,000.
Got it. Thank you. So, yeah, do does the commission have any guidance or input with regards to that question, number four, about breaking it up and?
It feels to me like if you go down the path and develop the architectural, I'll call it the architectural interest element, that might address some of this. So rather than having that little piece on the corner, if somehow they broke up the mass of the building, that might get what the developer was interested in. So I I see those as linked. I would see that developed a little more.
And then can you share this, the list one more time, the one through five? And then I think we're about ready to wrap it up, probably, but?
And then, yeah, I have heard, I think, pretty wide support for.
Yes, number five.
Waving the requirement for smaller projects, but just a question about the the size.
And?
And and so I can bring some examples of of a small project that was able to meet the requirement, and you can take a look at that.
Great.
And and whether you feel that that's.
Right.
Worth.
Yeah. And maybe some, I don't know if there are other cities around us that are core cities or that have anything like similar to that, that can, what are other cities our size doing with regards to small infill developments? Great.
I had a comment on question number four, adjust limits for splitting public space. I was interpreting that as splitting them between different development projects, such as the 104 and the Six Oaks. Is that not how you were phrasing the question?
Yeah, no, that wasn't what what we had in mind there is, I think the comment was, it gave an example of a of a fairly comfortable sized 1,500 square foot plaza, and thought that having the, having the threshold twice that size was too high. But if a if a project only had a 1,500 square foot requirement, then they could provide a 1,500 square foot plaza, as shown in in that. It's only when you get the larger projects that have a larger requirement that that comes into play.
Okay, so then those discrete open spaces on the Ross Road project, wouldn't they still count because they are separated by a driveway area? Wasn't that one of the restrict, one of the allowances?
Yeah, I'm not sure that comes into play on this project. I don't think it does. But, oh, you say because they're connected across here? I think that would be a stretch here. The place that we did that was at the Mercantile, where there's a driveway perpendicular that separates to the open space by a 20-foot, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, stood out in your chair on that, on the driveway, you know, cars coming and out. Yeah, I don't know, the 1,500 number seems a little, I feel like you can get some open spaces for, on even smaller than that, but I think there does need to be a, I feel like 1,500, you can, I don't know. I don't know how the commission feels about that, but I feel like you can have even smaller open spaces than that, but not too small.
I can bring other examples of projects that that have met that, and and we can explore a little bit more what the what the implications would be.
Right.
Scale may change with, when we talk about the square footage requirement as well.
Okay, great.
And the smaller projects versus larger projects.
Excellent. Okay. If, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to continue this until December 4th?
I move to continue the public hearing on downtown public space and code amendments to Wednesday, December 4th.
At second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I missed who made the motion in second. Could you tell me who?
Jason made the motion, oh?
I got it.
Okay. Dave has it. One of us was paying attention.
Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and move into the next part of the public hearing, next public hearing, minimum density code amendments. And led by Senior Planner Bruce Blackburn, and I think we do have a recusal for this section of the meeting?
Yeah, I don't know what the formal process is for this, but my employer has requested an exemption from some of the multi, or the minimum density and and, you know, transparency that I want to keep up here. I don't think that it would be prudent for me to stay up here, so I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion and head out. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Hampton, and I have had discussion about this, and we've also consulted with the city attorney.
Okay.
Appreciate your transparency and and your action in this. Thank you.
Thanks.
I thank Jason.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission and members of the public. This is a minimum density intensity activity centers plan and code amendment, and this is a public hearing regarding this item. This evening, you're going to receive a staff presentation. We would encourage the commission to have questions to staff. We're going to receive some public testimony. We'll have some staff responses if it's necessary. And we would like have council, commission deliberations and a planning commission recommendation this evening. We really do have to have something go into the city council here by the end of the year. Activity centers, or the RAC zone, was established in 2002, and the purpose was to focus growth along major transportation corridors and areas where we already had a lot of growth and potential growth. It encourages mixed uses. It allows building heights of up to 100 to 150 feet in certain circumstances. It has a population capacity that is equivalent to 20% of the city's population capacity. It is a very important contributor to the city's overall growth strategy. Employment capacity is even greater. It's about 65% of the city's total employment capacity. Again, a very key component of our city to establish that. Interesting thing about activities is there is no density cap. It's the way you get to the number of units or floor area is through the site and building regulations. I mentioned that 100-foot site elevation, building height, setbacks, parking, all those things, that kind of compendium of items gets you to a certain number, but there is no specific minimum, maximum. However, there is no specific minimum established either. And that's kind of interesting, because every one of our zoning code provisions for residential has a minimum. That's basically about 50% of the underlying zoning code. This is, the RAC is the only zone that does not have a minimum. And site and building regulations are established within individual subareas. And you can see, of course, there are a number of subareas. The main activity centers we're talking about tonight are Canyon Park and North Creek. Those two subareas have significant amount of interest from the development community on implementing and constructing items that we need to have some discussion about. We have a number of policy considerations about this particular planning code amendment. Certainly is the idea is to require minimum levels of development, you know, intensity or floor area ratios, wherein which subareas achieve the city's growth targets. We have got to do that. That is a requirement of the multi-county planning policies, and that's a little bit wonkish, but those are basically items that we have to provide for. This has got some important connection to some key council goals. Certainly, one of those is supporting the retaining, retention of the regional growth center designation within Canyon Park. That is a real key council goal, and certainly economic development. We want to make sure we achieve our economic development purposes from employment. There's a number of policy questions, and I've got a few of them up there that we'll kind of circle back to as we start having the deliberations. But these are some policy questions that the commission can kind of think about as we begin the deliberations and after they receive some of the public testimony that we're going to get tonight. Now, a little bit of an analysis on this, and again, most of this is within your memorandum. Again, I identify that all residential essential zones, except the RAC, have a minimum density. Canyon Park has Puget Sound Regional Council, regional act, sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council, regional growth center framework criteria. And that framework criteria is 45 AUs or activity units per acre. Within a regional growth center, you must plan for that activity number. An activity unit is basically either a resident or employee, and that's basically measured upon an acreage basis. North Creek is subject to King County Buildable Lands provisions, and the King County Buildable Lands provisions identified that the RAC is expected to get about 50 to 80 dwelling units per acre. Initially, our developments that we had proposed underneath the RAC, there was a couple of them, were achieving about 60 to 80 dwellings per acre. Recently, they've been achieving a much lower number, and that was the cause for this particular code amendment. A couple of those early AC density or RAC densities, you can see within the close proximity to here. One, of course, is the Beersley Village project. The other is called Emerald Crest. And you see there between 60 to almost 80 dwellings per acre, achieve a floor area ratio of 1.8, a little bit more than that, within those areas. Those are projects that were submitted and reviewed under the RAC provisions. Recently, we've been receiving some different types of developments within the RAC, and those are achieving much lesser densities. We're looking at anywhere from about 17 to 20-ish, maybe, dwellings per acre. This map kind of shows some of the locations where we've had some recent development proposals within these two basically subareas or activity centers. And some of them, you can see, we have one Canyon Park Apartments that's only in the pre-application stage, but again, it was achieving about 54. And one that was located within North Creek, a quadrant project that was about 37. So we do have some projects that are getting to there, but many of the others do not achieve those numbers. Residential within Canyon Park, again, our framework is 45 activity units per acre. We have certain persons per household multifamily multipliers that we are given by the Office of Financial Management, the state, and Puget Sound Regional Council. And those range from about 1.5 to 1.9. If you were to take that 1.5, to be conservative, divide by 45, that gets you basically to just right at 30. The proposal before you tonight is to go to 35, just to have a little bit of a cushion there, because again, 30 is just barely getting just to where we need to be there. North Creek, again, the couple of projects we've had within there, two of them are a fairly low number as comparison to what we would need to achieve. A quadrant project, which is basically on the Seattle Times site, is about 37. Right now, we're proposing a 35 dwelling unit per acre minimum within North Creek, the same as what we're proposing for Canyon Park. Makes it a little easier to have the same numbers within activity centers, you don't want to have a lot of different numbers. In your packet, you do have a range. We are saying you could look at maybe a 35 or a 50 to, again, to accommodate that King County Buildable Lands number. We believe that 35 will get to where we need to be, however. One of the things that we have do, we have to do here is that we have to establish some non-residential minimums. That's the intensity provision. And one, that best tool probably is identifying a floor area ratio. Now, that's not currently used in the city, but it is widely used throughout the region. And essentially, what it does, it connects a building area to the lot area. And what it helps is it helps you create the capacity for future employees. Yeah, perhaps, you know, a half or a third of the building is not used currently, but in three or four years, you might get some additional tenant improvements, and you might start to fill in that building. That has happened within Canyon Park quite substantially, successfully, I may actually add, because we have had quite a few of these properties that had some fairly low numbers, and we are busting into themes in Canyon Park as far as employee numbers goes. This would allow also those flex buildings that we're finding so successful in both North Creek and Canyon Park. You build the shell and you fill it with the type of use that is, makes a lot of sense in that area. The proposal for Canyon Park is 0.50. Now, initially, the first proposal was 0.6. We've had some discussion with the Owners Association, and, you know, they they kind of talked about a couple of things, and it made a lot of sense that we go with a 0.5 proposal. Right now, what we're seeing out there is about 4.2 to 4.0, well, anywhere from 4.2 to 4.25. That's fairly consistent in how much area we've got. There's certainly some smaller ones, there's certainly some larger ones, but that's basically what your average and your medium is within the Canyon Park sub, subarea and that activity center. North Creek has a little bit smaller floor area ratio right now. However, we're still proposing we achieve a 0.5, again, for the reason for, to make sure we get these capacities. reason for to make sure we get these capacities as these developments, as the projects and areas redevelop. And it's kind of interesting because we have seen a lot of interest. We're getting quite a few inquiries in both these subareas, both these activity centers, for redevelopment of some of these provisions, much more than we've ever seen in the past, and it's really becoming quite interesting for us. I just threw these in here because it's downtown, and people say, well, what is downtown achieving? What are you kind of getting there from there? And this basically shows a few of the projects that we've got out there and the achieved densities that were achieved that are being provided, which are, you know, in the hundreds or more dwellings per acre, as well as floor area ratio, which are in about a 2 to 2 and 1/2 range. So we're getting some pretty good sized development. That's kind of the concept that we're trying to achieve within all of our activity centers. This is an interesting slide. We did a little bit of analysis on townhomes, and that seems to be one of the areas where, you know, it's a really important housing market. We like it. It's very hot right now. We're getting a lot of development proposals. These were in downtown, and they achieved some pretty high floor area ratios of one, a little bit more than over one, as well as some pretty decent, but not sufficient for our activity centers areas density. So it's kind of an interesting aspect of it. I just threw this up there as something for entertainment purposes more than anything else. Canyon Park, we have had one development that was submitted many years ago. It never was constructed, so maybe it wasn't economically feasible at the time, but it achieved a floor ratio of about 4.1.45. This is kind of the potential right now that the maximum development regulations would permit. So this is kind of what you would see if you were looking at a maximum, not a minimum. And again, this is kind of a project that, again, was not constructed, but it does demonstrate the ability of somebody to get a fairly decent floor area ratio if they so desire underneath the current standards. So proposal for deliberations. Canyon Park established a 35 dwelling unit per acre designation, a 0.5 floor area ratio, a mixed-use provision, and we've got a couple of proposals for you that we want you to talk about. One would be just to sign a 1.0 floor area ratio for a mixed-use, basically where you'd have residential and a non-residential, or a little more flexibility there, and that would be meet one of the minimums, either density or floor ratio, and fill in, that's the best term I could come up with, at a lesser density or floor ratio at the applicant's discretion. This allows the applicant the flexibility to, you know, basically strike a market that works. And so as long as he meets one of those minimums, we're feeling comfortable that we're getting our, we're going to meet our growth targets and our activity unit per acre minimums, but allows a lot more flexibility for the development community to do something that might be a little bit different. North Creek, very similar. Again, 35 dwelling units per acre, non-residential, 0.5 floor ratio, mixed-use, one, and again, that same kind of a flexible standard that we would like the commission to discuss a little bit about this. So one of the things in the packet I just wanted to add is that when discussions with the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association, they identified, oop, you forgot to put RAC in one of your locations. And also, there's a, there's an example in one of the code sections, and we were basing it on a 0.6 FIR. We want to make that 0.5 because we don't have 0.6 in the code, so it doesn't make sense to have an example that is different than what we're having in the code. So a couple of real quick little changes we'd like to make. Finally, I want to emphasize that these are minimum densities and floor ratio ratios. They don't change the current maximum densities and building potentials within that area. That maximum capacity has been established since 2002 and has been added to over the nears with a number of planning code amendments. This is within the impact that has previously been evaluated for comprehensive plan and previous environmental review. That's an important aspect as well. In 2015, we did another update of our transportation analysis to make sure that those capacities, those capacities in the plan continue to meet our level of service in our corridor basis. Finally, this plan and code amendment assists the city in retaining that RGC designation, which is very critical for the city, and it also helps the city meet its growth allocations. One of the things we're doing here the next year and a half is we're doing a bunch of work on buildable lands, and that's basically where we have to prove to the counties that when we have a zoning classification of certain, and we presume that we're going to get this many units, we're getting pretty close to that. That activity is going to be really important because in the next year and a half, we're going to be having to say, in our RAC, what are we achieving? And if we're proving to show that we are not achieving our growth targets, our next comprehensive plan update, we're going to have to address that, and that has some implications for the entire community. So I want to say thank you very much. If you have any questions of staff, you know, please feel happy to make those questions to me. We want to have some public testimony, and we may have some staff responses at the end of that in case there may be some clarification the commission would like to have. And tonight, we would like the commission to make a recommendation to forward to the city council for approval of these planning code amendments as basically within the attachments 2A, 2B, and of course, attachment 1. We have to kind of do this because our last potential meeting with the city council is coming up here on December 3, and we really do need to have some type of a recommendation from the planning commission. So I will stop there. Thank you very much, and let me know if you have any questions.
Excellent. Excellent, as always, Bruce. Thank you very much. Anybody have any question? Mr. Kieran?
Yeah, could you back up one?
Bet.
And I just want to confirm for myself and maybe for others, the significance of that last bullet. So the, the RGC designation and meeting the allocations is significant to the regional planning bodies, like Puget Sound Regional Council, correct?
Yes, yes.
And one of the reasons that's significant is because there are more demands regionally for grant funds and transportation projects than there are resources. So when decisions are made about allocating those resources among the various cities, is it true that one of the factors is how well we do in meeting our goals?
The regional growth center designation is gives us additional points in the scoring for regional funding. So that's why it's important that we retain that designation.
So were we to put that at risk, we would risk losing access to some of these funds. Other communities that were doing better at meeting their goals could move ahead of us online.
And it's just to be clear, it's not necessarily about meeting the goals, and, and I want to, I want to pick up on something that Bruce mentioned. We don't have to demonstrate that, well, let me back up. We have to demonstrate that we can accommodate the growth targets that we have. In the case of the regional growth centers, there's a target of 45 activity units per acre. We have to demonstrate how we can get there in addition to being able to accommodate that. So yes, ultimately, that could be part of the scoring in terms of, you know, how are regional growth centers doing to actually achieve what they've said they will achieve in meeting those criteria? That is not currently one of the criteria. But having that designation is, and that's one of the key considerations in scoring for the regional funding. But it is important that going forward, that the regional growth centers demonstrate how they're actually achieving those, those growth numbers.
Okay. And letting some of this property be developed, not meeting those goals, will make it that much more difficult for the remainder of the property to meet the goals within that activity center.
That's correct. And, and as Bruce mentioned, it's not just in turn, it's not just about the regional growth center. This is also where the city has allocated a lot of its future growth for our overall comprehensive plan. So if we can't accommodate it here, we're going to get a new allocation in the next year that we have to use in our next comp plan update. If we can't put it here, if we can't accommodate here, we got to find somewhere else to put it. So we want to make sure we're really maximizing the, the capacity that we've already designated.
So, excuse me if I'm carrying on here, but so given that as background, how are other jurisdictions moving forward to ensure that their regional activity centers meet the goals?
The, the regional growth centers?
Oh, the regional activity center, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the, the RAC is a specific designation for Bothell.
For Bothell.
Regional growth centers are the, the regional designation, and there are 29 of those in the four counties. They all have to meet the same criteria, and those were updated just a couple of years ago by, by the regional council. So there are some that are not doing very well. We're, we're sort of, we're just barely at the minimum right now. The minimum requirement is 18 activity units per acre. We're, we're just like maybe that much below, I think, the 18.
Yeah, it depends on which calculator I use.
How you round.
So we've got to work a little bit harder than some others. But I would say what, what I'm aware of in terms of what most of the regional growth centers are doing is they're looking at up zones. They're looking at, you know, redefining those regional growth centers. They're doing market analyses, which is something that we're doing as part of our subarea plan update, to look at what will the market actually be able to do in those areas to make sure that it's, it's reasonable to expect that we'll get that amount of growth. Making infrastructure investments. Each one's a little bit different because in this one is somewhat unique in that it is, it's not a downtown. It's not a, an existing mixed-use area. So it's a little bit more challenging in some respects. You know, when you look at some of the other regional growth centers in this area, like Totem Lake in Kirkland, for example, that's one that has struggled for a couple of decades, and now it's really taking off. And they're, you know, they're, they're going to be able to, I think, to meet that 45 AU per acre. The only other one in Snohomish County is Payne Field. Or, no, I'm, yeah, no, I'm sorry, Downtown Everett.
Downtown Everett.
Payne Field is a manufacturing center. Sorry, yeah, which is another type of regional center that gets the funding. So yeah, Downtown Everett is the other one, and they've been doing a lot of planning for their downtown, particularly with the future expansion of light rail to that area. But they've also struggled to achieve those numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, no current, Bruce, no more questions at this point for you. Thanks for the excellent presentation. Let's take some time now for any public comment. If, and oh, we do have a list. I always forget the list. I don't know what it's. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, it looks like we do have several people signed up. We have a strike through on one of them here. We have Robert.
FitzMorris.
FitzMorris? Great, thanks.
Hi, my name is Robert FitzMorris. Thanks for the opportunity to address the planning commission. I'm not in favor of staff's recommendation for the minimum density in Canyon Park area of 35 units per acre. Staff indicated that the city is trying to meet the PSRC requirement of 45 activity units. Staff calculations indicate that this is 29.22 units per acre. I feel it's inappropriate to increase that number by 25% to 35 units per acre. Furthermore, if the goal is to meet the 45 activity units, then a townhouse is closer than a single-family residence to a one-bedroom multifamily unit, which the calculations use. If you use the other number in the calculations that are closer to a single-family residence, the more appropriate number would be 18 to 20 units per acre would get you the same number of activity units. So in short, if you have an apartment that has one bedroom, it has fewer activity units than a single-family residence or a townhouse that would have two or three people per that unit as opposed to one for the multifamily units. So if we're trying to meet activity units, we need to go to more of a bedroom standard or something else, but different units, apartments versus townhomes, have different calculations and should be treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Roger Bellnich? Hopefully I pronounced that last name. Okay, thank you.
I've given my address already. I have some, some broad testimony here, but I'll start off with the teachers' property, Bruce. On page 23 of your attachment, it's, it says 20, 35 units per acre. The, the teachers' property that we've submitted a plan for a year and a half ago, by the way, and we have 10.9 acres on our project, but it's restricted within the pad that we're showing on the, on the office buildings, Bruce. Could you bring that pad, that photo back up? Yeah, right there. Those buildings are the only areas that are developable within the 10.9 acres. The infrastructure, stormwater, blacktop has been put in place. Those ponds that you see are mitigation for that office buildings at the time 10 years ago. So now we only have those four pads available, and there's been some restriction due to a change in the setbacks from shorelines. Michael, could you verify that we have been restricted? Yeah. So if you take 10.9 acres and apply, and I'm not sure of this, 35 units per acre, but we can only develop up to 100 feet on those pads. That's the, the 60, 60 feet, I believe. Well, the, that gross area doesn't apply to those five pads, four pads. Now, I just read this this evening, so I'm a little bit impromptu about it, but how would you calculate then the 10.9 acres and the restriction, the, you had mentioned earlier, 570 units, but we're really down and we have to recalculate because of the setback from the wetlands, the, the shorelines is just being reestablished due to a change by the city.
Correct.
So we're, we're probably at 400, at best guess is 450 units. So can we accommodate that within the gross?
And if, if you could wrap it, but we're almost, I think our three minutes is almost up, and so, I mean, if there's additional also comments or information that the staff would need to get at a later date, if you could get it for you before.
I'll go to a different subject. Leave that one alone. Across the way, across 20th, is the Sound Transit bus facility, which has taken out a lot of your potential residential. And it's been measured in, in the EI, in the draft EIS is only going to address, is not going to address transportation and roads. So I just can't believe that that's happening, that, that they're not addressing in the draft EIS, transportation and roads, nor the off, the HOV off-ramp on 405 and its access into, into the business park on 17th. Canyon Park is--
Yeah, can you wrap up your comments? We're well over the three minutes. I am sorry.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot going on at Canyon Park that's not being addressed.
Okay.
And, and that should be done, particularly having to do with the, with the transportation facility of Sound Transit.
Okay, thank, thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Bellnich. Tim McCarg?
Wow. Well done.
Thank you. One's in a while.
My name's Tim McCarg. I work for Van Ness Feldman, and we represent the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. We drafted a letter to you, and so in the interest of time, I just want to confirm that you received that letter because it wasn't included in the packet. At least that was online. So I don't want to reiterate a lot of that. What I'd like to do is highlight some of which, some of what Mr. Bellnich was trying to, to highlight in his later comments. There's a lot of complexity currently in Canyon Park, and we are concerned about that. We've worked very closely with the city on these issues, and we really appreciate the time that both Mr. Cat-- We've worked very closely with the city on these issues and we really appreciate the time that both Mr. Katerman and Mr. Blackburn have given us in terms of trying to understand our issues. First of all, all of the roads within Canyon Park are private. They don't meet city standards. There is an active city subarea plan going on for Canyon Park. There is a Wash dot 405 Express toll lane and Bus Rapid Transit project going on in Canyon Park. There is a Sound Transit bus maintenance facility going on in Canyon Park. So with all that said, I want to thank staff for taking the technical aspects of our comments in our letter and addressing those. The non-conformity issue, we're comfortable with that. The adjustments to the flurry ratio minimums, we're comfortable with that. Our issue, as indicated in our comments, relate to the process. We don't understand why these amendments are being pulled apart from the subarea plan, pulled apart from the EIS process associated with the subarea plan and being done as a standalone amendment. That makes no sense to us at all. The presentation indicated that the city intends, we have no SEPA analysis on this yet. The city intends to pursue to the slide that was presented, to use the previous comp plan, EIS, and addenda for this. I am certain, although I haven't reviewed those yet because they're not available, that those previous environmental analysis did not include the Sound Transit bus barn, did not include the Wash dot project, did not analyze in detail the private road system in Canyon Park. And so the effects of this amendment on those issues and those complexities is unknown at this point. So that's the primary issue that we have. You know, and as I think Mr. Bellnich was stating, we found out in our response to our comments on this from July today, that the city doesn't intend to analyze any of those in the DEIS for the subarea plan. They're deferring those to the FEIS. And that's fine, that's the city's prerogative, but it puts us, the Business Owners Association, in a very difficult position. And that is, we don't get to comment on that analysis that will be done for the FEIS. That is issued. There's no comment period on that. We don't get to review the analysis, come to some agreement with the city. Our only avenue at that point is to appeal the adequacy of the FEIS, first to the hearing examiner and then to the courts. And we feel that that's a very poor way to try to deal with these complex issues. Finally, I would like to respond to some of the issues that have been presented to you tonight. The city appears to be taking what I would like to call, as a planner, a zone it and they will come approach to this. Okay, can I have a few more minutes since I'm representing 60 property owners, please? Okay, I will be very quick then. Zoning doesn't make good things happen. That's not what it's for. Zoning prevents bad things from happening. And we agree that under utilization of urban land in the Canyon Park subarea is something bad that should be prevented. We agree on that. But what the numbers that are being shown here show is that there are problems with the marketing and development of this, of the area in Canyon Park. The reason you're not achieving densities and flurry ratios that you would like to see is because there's no there there. There's no amenities, there's no central urban design organizing principle, there's insufficient traffic capacity, there's no commercial services to support high-density housing. That's what the plan is supposed to be doing. This is being fast-forwarded and I understand you need a backstop against that. But why it's being disconnected from all of the good work that the city is doing on the subarea plan and evaluating those environmental impacts, to me, is unclear. The downtown is achieving those densities and intensities because you had a plan, you implemented the plan, you spent money, you put money into it, and now the market is responding. So we would like, in the interests of partnering with the city, to see the same thing happen in Canyon Park. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker is Gary Yao.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Gary Yao. I'm of Sound Transit Land Use Permitting. Appreciate the opportunity to address the commission with regards to the code amendment that's being considered this evening and the potential effects on our proposed Bus Space North project. So as you may or may not know, the Bus Space North project is a bus maintenance facility that's crucial to the maintenance and operations of primarily our Bus Rapid Transit projects, BRT. When the I-405 BRT and SR-522 BRT projects open in 2024, they will be providing some frequent and reliable high-capacity transit service between Bothell and other regional destinations for most hours of the day. Bus Space North is strategically located in Bothell because these two Bus Rapid Transit lines intersect in the city, 405 and 522. And there will be seven stations, seven BRT stations in total, serving the city. We looked at 18 different sites for Bus Space North, including many sites that were suggested by the city. And with considerations in addition to location being sized, how flat the site was, whether or not there's critical areas, displacements impacts. The site that we've identified at the intersection of 20th and 214th in the Canyon Park subarea end up rising to the top and meeting that criteria. And as we know, because the minimum FAR would apply in the Canyon Park area, it would also apply to our project. We understand that, we've heard loud and clear, that the city is interested in applying the minimum FAR to all developments as it is looking to make sure that it could accommodate the growth needed to maintain the PSRC Regional Growth Center targets. I would like to emphasize, however, that unlike most developments, there are some unique circumstances that make it quite difficult for the Bus Space North project, which is an essential public facility, to meet the minimum .5 FAR that's being proposed. The first one is that the site has a pretty extensive horizontal program of circulation and parking for about 120 buses and over 250 employee vehicles. And based on the drawings that we discussed with the city at a pre-app a couple of weeks ago, we don't really anticipate that design having much room for changing, nor do we anticipate any surplus property that might have some opportunity for transit-oriented development after being surplus, after the construction happens on the site. The other main concern that we have is that in order to satisfy the .5 FAR, Sound Transit would need to construct about 280,000 square feet that we would need to occupy. And this is about twice the amount of square footage of even the Link Light Rail facility for operations and maintenance in Seattle. So we would just like to respectfully ask the planning commission to consider adding language that exempts Bus Space North from meeting this minimum FAR. We understand and knowledge with previous discussions with city staff that we don't know the exact impacts of how this affects the city's ability to meet the PSRC growth targets, but are willing to continue to collaborate with the city and PSRC as it works to develop the Canyon Park subarea plan to make sure that this is still a viable area. And Bus Rapid Transit, we see is a key component of making that viable. Thank you, planning commission, city staff, and city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you again for all the speakers who came here tonight to speak to us with regards to this pretty complicated topic that I know. Oh, and I am sorry, it looks like there might be more. I'm sorry, there was, is there anybody else who'd like to come speak? Okay, please state your name for the record and please hold your comments to no more than three minutes.
Thank you, sorry about that. My name is Amanda Olson. I live probably nine blocks away from Canyon Park and I just wanted to urge the commission to approve these minimums. If anything, I think they're not aggressive enough. It's very important to me as a resident that we keep our growth center designation and that we build density where we have transit. And just because it came up, I do think there's a case to be made for that bus barn facility to have maybe an exception because as someone who commutes by bus, I really like when they run and they're fixed. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael, did you have something to say? Oh, you're looking, I thought you were.
Anticipating questions from.
Okay, yes, yes. Does anybody have any questions for Bruce or Michael with regards to this? Yes.
Yeah. Question. So as we're looking at the developable area, both North Creek and Canyon Park have some significant sensitive areas, wetlands, waterways through it. Are those areas removed from the calculation?
They are.
Okay.
They're the adjust boundary. That's one of the things that we're going to be changing through the subarea plan.
But even, well, North Creek runs right through the middle of both of them. It's kind of looking at those setbacks.
So the idea would be, the piece of property that would be potentially subject to a development proposal would be based upon a net calculation where we deduct those type of facilities, yes.
And second question goes to the essential public facilities. Is there any consideration of how essential public facilities are figured into this as a former developer of one?
So that is something that we're taking a closer look at, but we believe that, our understanding of the requirements for essential public facilities is that under state law, we cannot preclude them. So we can't put regulations in place that would effectively preclude or prohibit them from locating in the city. We believe we're on solid ground in terms of a minimum requirement that would apply across the board, including essential public facilities. So we're, that's the, that's the position of the city at this point. We think that it would apply to an essential public facility as well, whether it's a bus maintenance facility or any other type of essential public facility.
So you've done some level of analysis to indicate that this could fit in and allow the overall area to meet the goals?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the essential public facility is going to take up a certain amount of land and you're going to get a certain amount of activity units out of it. With that, it wouldn't detract from the ability to meet the overall goals?
If it's not meeting the minimum that we are establishing, then yes, it would detract from our ability to meet the overall goals, which is why we believe that it would apply to essential public facilities as well as any other type of development. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. Given some of the complexities around these facilities and the specific requirements around each of them, and different facilities have different requirements, what they do as far as meeting those minimums? So I'm not sure.
And yes, and I think I understand where you're coming from on the question. And I agree that each one is going to have its unique challenges because of the type of facility that it is. That's why it's an essential public facility. They're difficult to cite and we recognize that. But we also have to look at the bigger picture and the requirements that are on the city and the fact that it takes up a significant amount of land. We're talking about 12 and a half acres in this particular example. But even if it were a different type of essential public facility, if it's taking up that much of a chunk of the property that we need to achieve our overall capacity and our growth targets, then we would want to treat that the same as we would any other type of development. And we would, we're starting from the standpoint of demonstrate to the city, whatever your proposal is, whether it's an essential public facility or a private development, how you're going to achieve that minimum. At this point, we are not proposing that we build in any exemptions for those because to give a blanket exemption, I think, would be not really considering all the possibilities that might be able to be applied to make something work. And again, that would depend based on the facility. We're very early in the discussions with Sound Transit on this facility. I've seen one concept and as Mr. Yao mentioned, they've had a pre-application meeting with the city. I haven't seen that one yet. I haven't reviewed that one specifically. But that's not to say that there wouldn't be some opportunities to try to accommodate some additional activity units on the site.
Thank you.
And we will continue to work with them on how that might be achieved.
Great, thanks, Michael. Fisher Cabe?
I've got a couple of questions on the comments made earlier. First one was Mr. Bellnich. And if you could go back to the photo with the ponds and the pads, if it's a 10,900 square foot site, and we just talked about that it takes out critical areas from the calculation, it'd also take back the setback from any mitigation ponds or anything like that as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when we're looking at numbers and kind of going through, 550 was the original count and now it's 400 is what they could get out of that site? Is that tracking with what you guys have looked at or have you not really done analysis specifically on what's left here?
That's the first I've heard about the 400. We've based it on the previous conversations. We haven't had an application or a pre-app on this. We've been working with Mr. Bellnich and his consultants on trying to address the previous mitigation they did on the site 15 years ago and the fact that regulations have changed over those 15 years.
Exactly.
Some of which the city has control over, some of which we do not.
And I saw, yeah, yeah, right.
So we are working very closely with the consultants, Mr. Bellnich's consultants, to try to figure out how to make that work as best we can within the restraints that we have as a jurisdiction and our legal requirements. I'm going back. Bruce, didn't you have one that showed the calculation on that particular project?
No, unfortunate.
Canyon Park Apartments. So the calculation that was done based on the 531 units, which was a concept that Mr. Bellnich shared with us about a year and a half ago, that's at 54 units to the acre. So that more than meets the minimum of 35. We could do a calculation on the 400 or whoever, we don't know exactly what that number is going to end up being. So it would be difficult to say, you know, whether it would meet that 35 minimum or not. But the other option that we will be looking at through this subarea plan is, you know, potentially increasing heights or density allowances or those types of things. So, you know, providing for bonuses, those kinds of things. So there may be other ways to achieve that as well. You know, this project is, I think, in pretty good shape as far as the minimum.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Fitz Morris had a few comments there. My questions were interlinked. You explained it well, but I had a hard time keeping up with the notes. But as far as the analysis when looking at the bedroom ratio of a single-family versus a single apartment and how that would flush out, A, what are the thoughts on looking at a bedroom versus FAR? And B, just to that specific example, if you could kind of walk me through the math one more time or if Mr. Fitz Morris can, but.
Well, one of the things is that we have to recognize that we are given those people-per-household figures from other agencies, particularly Office of Financial Management, which is a state agency, and Puget Sound Regional Council. They identify to us what the average persons-per-household is within a certain type of housing product. And essentially you have to use those numbers. Yeah, you could make an argument, well, we're going to have only five-bedroom apartments or four, whatever it happens to be. But I do not believe we have the flexibility to craft our own unique persons-per-household provisions. I'm trying to use the figures that we are given from our outside agencies to say, this is what we will expect you to achieve.
In addition to that, I would add that the person-per-household may be different by housing type. So a townhouse may be different than a one-bedroom apartment, certainly, particularly if it's a three-bedroom townhome. You would assume there would be more people living in the townhome, but you can achieve a greater density with an apartment building than you can with a townhouse development. So there is a trade-off there. And what we're talking about, because we're talking about activity units, we're talking about a number of people. So bedrooms, those come into play, but the density, you know, in the calculations that we have used and what's used in other areas, the density is often what drives the overall count.
Thanks. And then Mr. McCarg had a couple of comments. If we could just touch on a few of them. One was decoupling the EIS in this process and maybe pulling this out from the kind of comprehensive plan analysis. Can you guys give us a little bit more feedback on what that looks like and what the option is for feedback? Sounds like it's limited, that there wouldn't be an opportunity for Canyon Park to come and weigh in once it's going down the tracks.
So I'll let Bruce address the EIS portion of it and then I'll talk to the decoupling of this from the subarea plan.
Yeah, and one of the things that's kind of interesting is about this is that this has been a need that we have identified. Yeah, and one of the things that's kind of interesting is about this is that this has been a need that we have identified as pretty recently, as we've been experiencing this. In about eight or nine months, we will be having a brand-new Canyon Creek, Canyon Park subarea plan that will replace many of these things. It's just right now, we have to have this interim protection, I guess is what I would call it. Mr. McCarry and the owners out there have a really tough thing going on right now. There are so many arrows coming their way. And, you know, he identified that, Sound Transit, the City of Bothell's own process, WashDOT, I'm sorry, Washington State Department of Transportation has a new project that's going into their direct access. There's a lot of things that they're having to deal with right now, and it's really difficult. I can say that we are committed to making a lot of talk and spend a lot of time with the owner's association to make sure that the vision that we all established back in 2017 gets implemented in these, in this comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations. So that's where we really want to have their, that input, is trying to craft a subarea plan that meets their needs as well as our own. And you want to take on the decoupling or?
And staff, we've talked quite a bit about this, and we have met with Mr. McCarry and spoken with him about this. And we appreciate his time and also the Property Owners Association, the Canyon Park Business Owners Association out there, and all of their time and effort. We've had a few meetings with them, and as Bruce mentioned, we'll continue to have meetings with them. They're obviously a key stakeholder, probably the key stakeholder for this, the subarea plan. We decided to decouple this from the subarea plan for, for a couple of reasons that are interrelated. One has to do with the timing, and the other has to do with the fact that we are seeing more developments, actual developments, as well as proposals that are coming in well below the level of intensity and density that we need to achieve, not only our regional growth center, but our overall growth targets for the city. So that raised some real concerns on the part of staff, which is why we went to the council back in July.
July.
I believe it was, and asked them to initiate this particular comp plan amendment for this year, so we could get something in place by the end of this year. And that's the other piece of this, is that under, under the Growth Management Act, we do these amendments once a year. So we either do it this December, or we do it next December. And we were just concerned about what proposals might come in the door before we were able to get the Canyon Park plan in place and then do the comprehensive plan amendment that would go into effect at the end of 2020. So that's why we uncoupled. I agree with Mr. McCarry. Ideally, we would run them together. We feel though that we have, that we have enough analysis and information to go forward with this particular amendment at this time, understanding that when we get through the rest of the subarea plan, that will give us some additional information, and we may come back and do some refinement of these numbers. But we're, we're very comfortable with the numbers that we have, that we've come up with at this point. And, and that's why we're asking the commission to make a recommendation this evening, so that we can complete this by the end of this year for the comp plan amendment cycle.
Okay. One last question related to the same topic or same comment string. Just reading through the letter, can I just mention that there's three properties that are developable? One, looking at the bus barn facility, one already under development as a townhouse, and then a third one that's still outstanding. So I don't want to say that this doesn't have an impact on Canyon Park, but it seems like it's a neutered version for this area because it's already built out. Am I incorrect in that assessment, or is that?
I would just add to that because I think there's, what we're looking at through the subarea plan is future development in Canyon Park.
For sure.
And as Mr. McCarry mentioned, one of the things that we're looking for is to really help this area evolve from what is a, you know, a high-quality business park, a typical, you know, 1990s-style office park, business park, that's more suburban in style, to something that's more urban, mixed-use, walkable, livable, and creates those opportunities for people to live and work in the same area. And we've heard repeatedly from the other stakeholders in this area, the, the owners of the businesses, the employers, the major employers out there, that their employees are asking for that. So that's what we're trying to achieve in this area. So there's going to have to be some redevelopment that occurs as part of that. So yes, there are three key pieces of property right now, but we also see that there will be redevelopment and additional development occurring on the properties that are there. We've already had one meeting recently with one of the major employers out there that are looking at doing some additional development on their parking lot and creating a parking structure to go along with that, to replace the surface parking that they would be building the building on. So, and that's really what we see. A lot of those surface lots out there are almost like land banking. As the property values go up, as the demand increases, I think that's where we'll see more building occurring on those. We won't necessarily see tear downs and replacements, although there will be some of that as well. So from that standpoint, I think there is a tremendous amount of potential in these areas.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Commissioner Cabe.
So let me kind of rephrase what I think I've heard here. We're looking at 2019 amendments to the comp plan. There will be amendments to the comp plan associated with Canyon Park in 2020. We've got the plan coming through. We know that there will be additional changes, which may or may not modify what we're doing here tonight, based on additional analysis. But we have some concern that in the intervening 12 months, we may lose some opportunity to meet the goals.
That's correct.
That's the purpose here.
Yes. And I would add, not just in Canyon Park, but also in North Creek.
North Creek as well.
Yes.
But Canyon Park specifically has the plan that's moving forward, and we know that there'll be an action there.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I guess, oh, Commissioner Cabe.
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation, Bruce. I have kind of a hot take on this because if we're trying to increase density, I totally agree with Mr. McCann in that putting these minimum requirements, that's not how you build, it's not, you're trying, have a group of people that are trying out for a team. You don't say, you have to meet this threshold, and then we'll bring you on the team. I feel like the glaring issue in Canyon Park is parking minimums. And I think that's really restricting a lot of the redevelopment potential of this area. Parking minimums do drive density. That's, you said that earlier tonight, and that's just a commonly and well-known fact. The parking minimums that are already established for Canyon Park are kind of contrary to council goals of climate resiliency. And I would hope, I mean, this is way past the scope of this specific code amendments, but I would hope that as 2023 amendments come through to the long-term vision of this area, I hope that we would reanalyze parking minimums, especially in this regional growth area, to try and spur on redevelopment potential that's going to be long, long-range and have, you know, vision past 2024 to 2050.
And that wouldn't wait until '23. That would be part of the subarea plan update in 2020.
Next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So parking is something, you're absolutely right, and parking is something that we're looking at through that process. We're actually going to be developing an entirely new code for this area.
It's exciting to hear. Thanks.
Did I just overpromise? I'm looking at Bruce because he's.
Never, never. We're expecting it.
Well, I guess with that, we prob, Commissioner Cabe, oh, I thought. I guess we can go ahead and start. It looks like Bruce wants us to give him something to take to council here, if we can. I know it's, there's always a lot more we could do on this subject before getting it, but I think we have to keep in mind what Michael was saying with regards to proposals that are coming in and what are we trying to attain with regards to density for these two specific areas that we're looking at. So I guess if you guys are okay with it, we'll just make our way through attachment 2A, because it looks like basically you want 2A, 2B, and part three, right? You want, or attachments 2A, 2B.
And 2B are the plan and code amendments respectively.
Okay.
Attachment one is your findings.
Okay, right. Well, let's see. If we want to start with, should we start with 2A? And just go, just kind of go through and see if anybody has any questions with regards to any of the pages? We'll just kind of go through them. So we'll start with page. Do we want to look at the findings first and? Okay, let's go ahead and we can stay, I'll start with the findings. Yeah, that makes sense. If anybody has any, let's see, sorry. So we can start with the findings on pages one and two.
Findings.
If anybody has any questions with regards to those.
Chair?
Yes.
I think maybe it might be better served if you go through the plan and code language, and that may result in some changes to the findings. And then we can come back to the findings and make those changes as we go through that process.
So 2A here, start with.
2A, if you would, please.
Okay.
And one of the things about 2A is, and we have a lot of repetitive language here.
Right.
My request with the commission was, let us see if we can find a way to say it once.
Okay.
And so it applies to everything.
And then refer it?
Yes, and that's, and that's one of the things that I intended to do, and I didn't quite get to it in my due date, so.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Let's see, I guess it's pages, well, LU two, three, and four, if anybody has any comments. Looks like it's mostly.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cabe.
It'll probably be handled next year, but page three, or LU dash three, number four at the bottom. The maximum number of dwelling units will be constructed, controlled by building codes. I was hoping that we would have, I guess, to the earlier comments that you made about, you know, parking, like bonuses for either, if you had like a green building component to it, or some other things where you give potential more units or an added height bonus based on location, close to transportation, something like that. Maybe we look at that in 2020, but it would be cool to get that included as well.
We will be looking at that as part of the subarea plan, because we're also looking at affordable housing as maybe part of that bonus system.
Perfect.
Thanks. Okay, and then LU five and six. Okay. LU seven and eight.
Probably insignificant, Nick, but if, on LU seven, number four, maximum residential densities and floor area ratios, the next two, maximum residential densities and maximum floor area densities. The word maximum is missing in four. Is that?
It is. It is missing there.
Okay.
Oh, nice catch. Okay, and then LU nine. Okay, same. And then keep moving along here to page one, attachment 2B. And then pages two and three. Okay, and pages four and five.
And I would again ask the commission's indulgence to see if we can say this one time instead of within every one of those.
Oh, right.
Zoning classifications.
Okay, sure. Okay, and pages six and seven. Pages eight and nine. 10 and 11. This is where we start getting into some. So, and then Bruce, just on page 10, 150% of underlying zone.
Yeah, actually, what I'm doing is I'm taking this opportunity to put this requirement that's in every other zoning provision into the table. So basically, that's what our requirement is, is that it's 150% of the underlying zone, you have to meet at least that minimum standard. It's in the text, but it's not in this table.
Okay, okay.
Table is really a key because it's, it is a really quick visual reference for folks to see what the standards are.
Okay. 11, 12, and 13.
And on page 12 is where we would insert the new provision that I had on the slide, where we'd put in basically. On, yeah, let me do that, sorry. There it is.
Oh, right, got it. Understood. Okay. 14 and 15. 16, 17. 18 and 19. This is where we really start talking about the FAR, right?
That's correct.
So anybody have any questions with regards to that after listening to the comments?
Quick question on page 19. Bruce, as far as FAR transference, does this language sort of get us out of any issues if there's an existing property that spans two parcels, or I guess I'm just trying to see what the point of.
Well, and that's exactly it. In case you have a parcel that has a building on mostly one parcel and has just a little bit on the other, we might make sure we have a provision that addresses those type of situations. This is language we've got from some of the other provisions in our code when we're talking about density transference.
Gotcha.
Applied the same concept here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. In item A3 on page 18, is there an extra at at the last part of that sentence? Similar unit of.
Which, which line number is that?
Line 31.
Okay.
To derive the floor area ratio.
I'm sorry, which page?
Page 18.
18.
Line 31.
All right, remove the word at?
Yeah. To derive the floor area ratio.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There it is.
Okay, and pages 20 and 21.
So not so much a question, I'm sure maybe an observation on 2005-0B. So there are non-conforming structures out there, and they're just out of the equation. Oh, five oh B, so there are non-conforming structures out there and they're just out of the equation here. So if a property owner, or if someone owns multiple parcels, some of them have non-conforming. You don't have to make the other ones come up to.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is that if you're making it bigger, you don't have to meet that minimum floor area ratio if it's a legal, non, a legal. Gosh dang it, sorry, legally established, non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
Twenty-two and twenty-three. Rule. And then.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say that twenty-three and twenty-four is where you first have this option for the commission.
Yeah, we need to.
To, by which one you believe makes the most sense. Or if you want to do all of them, I don't know.
So yeah, let's just, it's part C on twenty-three, let's, we'll kind of come to some consensus. And, or if everybody dislikes what staff and Bruce has brought to us.
Well, I like flexibility if any of these options can achieve the ultimate goal. I'd rather not be prescriptive and give different choices.
Carson's nodding his head, says he's in agreement there. And by giving flexibility there, you, what are you speaking to specifically?
Well. Back on the, the other side, asking us for direction, there are some choices, they can either.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sure, you can go into. Chris or Kate, you have something related? What's that?
Is mine off? Done now, okay, a little slow on the trigger finger. So, so point, point four there indicates crafting flexibility, and I would agree with that. Meaning one of the minimums.
Okay.
And I think that the language on page twenty-five, lines eight to twelve, probably better achieves that. Because it really does identify the applicant has that discretion.
Can I ask one question on twenty-four? So three C. An either/or proposition on, so either fully provide non-residential land uses at the minimum floor area ratio of point five, and then apply a reduced residential density, or the inverse of that. My thought is, and maybe it wouldn't apply necessarily for the. Bus maintenance facility, but. I'm more concerned with maintaining the minimum residential units. And I know that it equates the same whether we're providing jobs or providing residential units, but. It seems like then it might solve our issue with the bus bar, and if that's a reduced FAR on a non-residential site. I know it's not going to be a mixed-use parcel where they're going to have residential as part of it, but I just was wondering if that was a way we could. Achieve. Our goals.
The concept here is to meet either one. Either the minimum density or the minimum floor area ratio, and then fill in. The other one at the applicant's discretion. And let the market dictate that, so. For the bus maintenance facility, it would probably be the non-residential floor area ratio they would want to be achieving versus the residential.
And we can't do that currently, so, okay, never mind.
And I think the, if I understand where you're, you're going with this, I think that's a separate approach. Because this is really getting at a mixed-use development. And in the case of the bus facility, it wouldn't be mixed use.
Right.
Per se. You know. There may be some ways to do a transfer. You know, it might achieve the same thing, you can reduce it here if you make it up over here or something like that.
Yeah.
But I think that's a little different approach.
Agreed, okay.
So it sounds like we're liking what we see as a commission on twenty-four. And twenty-five. Does that, does that, does that seem correct? Okay. So that gives you enough guidance there, Bruce, on that?
It does, thank you.
Just real quick, is everyone, I mean, just a straw poll on the numbers that we're looking at. Is everyone good with thirty-five and point five, or? Because we're.
Yeah, it's.
We had some discussion on this a couple of sessions ago. And if I recall correctly, the thirty-five. Was kind of a. It wasn't, it was a number that we landed on that we felt would still be defensible for new developments to still. Take on without too much financial, you know, or to make the new development pencil out still without it being too restrictive. And so I think it's an easy access point for the type of development that we're expecting for redevelopment of these parcels. I mean. I'm, I'm okay with the thirty-five, and I think that we had to have some good discussion on that earlier, too.
And I heard there was some discussion with the owner, and the point five was acceptable.
That's what we heard this evening in testimony, yes.
Yeah.
Anybody else, what do you think, Chris or Kate?
I think I kind of fluctuate between the two, at some points I feel like it's not enough. When we looked at the Seattle Times property, it seemed like it was prime for development and to only get, what is it, twenty-four, or?
Thirty-four.
Currently?
Sorry. Thirty-seven, apologies.
They're getting thirty-seven on it?
There are three sites there as part of the Seattle Times, so there are two projects that are already in review. That are below, they're, that's the Preston.
The townhomes ones?
Right, so those are, yeah, those are much lower densities, eight and nineteen. The one in the middle, and this was just a concept at this point, we don't have a formal application, was above the thirty-five.
Okay. I kind of agree that we can't just force higher densities and hope that the market meets us there if there aren't the amenities in place. But I am concerned that what developer land we have is coming in at the lower numbers, not that we don't need townhouses, but. Those are, those are pretty small, so, so I'm okay with thirty-five and point five.
Chris or Pastor?
I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, so I guess you have consensus there by the commission. And then. And then we're just, and so twenty-six and twenty-seven, we're still. Yeah. Okay, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, in there, page thirty. Okay, same. Okay. See, Bruce, can you go back to those, is, where are we at with regards to all the things you're requesting the guidance on?
I think we got there.
I think we did, too.
Yes.
Okay, great. Great. And so with that, I think we've, we've gone through the packet, gone through the findings, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. So, do you have a motion up for us there, Bruce, or should we go look in the packet, we'll go, sit here.
Yes, you'll of course want to do one motion which would close the public hearing.
Yes. A motion to close the public hearing?
I would move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Carries unanimously. Is there any discussion? Further discussion, or actually, I'm sorry, entertain a motion to. I'll see. There we go, there's the motion there. Entertain a motion for that.
I move to recommend the plan and code amendments for minimum density and intensity within the activity centers as contained in these attachments. Two A and two B, and the capital facilities element in attachment three as amended. And adopt the draft planning commission findings in the attachment one as amended.
I would second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, any discussion on the motion? Okay. So. I guess, there we have it, so, thank you very much, sorry. Let's see. And no public meeting, oh, and nobody's leaving yet, but we really do appreciate all of the input from, from the business owners and sound transit and property owners in the area. Thank you very much for coming out, I know you guys have spent a lot of time here tonight, so we do, we do appreciate that. And a study session or old business? And then staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so just a couple of things in your desk packet, wanted to bring your attention. One is you're aware, we received a resignation from Commissioner Merrill Cook. Early, well, I was gonna say earlier this month, actually last month, already in the November. So that's unfortunate, we're very sad to see him go, but it sounds like he has some other commitments which he has alluded to in the past, so. He will not be able to finish out his term as planning commissioner, excuse me, I did talk to the city clerk. Will process this through the regular appointment process, since that's coming up fairly soon. The council will do interviews early in the year, make appointments sometime February or early March. Because this is a vacancy, that appointment would start immediately upon appointment by the council. So we certainly wish. Wish Aaron our best, and hopefully we'll find other ways to participate with the commission and with the business of the city. We also included in your packet, request from Mr. Westerbeck that we forward some information to you. Some of this he referred to, excuse me, and provided a handout at your last meeting. I don't think the handout was complete in terms of what he provided at that time, so he wanted to make sure that you received the full packet of information. So my apologies, we did intend to include that in your packet, and we missed that one. So we want to make sure that we got that to you, that is in, in your packet, that's just for information. He did, I believe, make a request in some of that information for a docket item. So you can raise that when we have the discussion about the docket for 2020 if you so desire. We've already talked about the meeting dates, and the only other thing we had was just a report out on the planning conference in Tacoma. I know Commissioner Curd attended, I was not able to attend, but most of the planning staff went, including Dave and Bruce. So Dave actually spoke, he was one of the panelists on a session about downtown redevelopment. Which I've heard from several sources went very well, we had a few other cities participate with him on that. So we're always happy to promote all the good work that's being done in Bothell, the good planning work. So Bruce, if you want to, anything you want to say about the conference?
Actually, there were some pretty decent sessions, I was pleasantly surprised at some of the ones I attended. I had some good detailed information on some areas that kind of had some interest. And of course, at one of these conferences, you always go to one that's like completely out of your wheelhouse, those are fun, too, so. Yeah, if you have a chance next year to go, I recommend commission attend.
I didn't think there was anything outside your wheelhouse, Bruce.
There isn't, but.
I like knowing that it is. Well, thank you, that's really cool that Dave spoke, I'm sure he did an awesome job, and no doubt about that. It's not a surprise. And we did the summer meeting dates, reports from members, Carson?
I have some reports, it's been a while since we met last. And in fact, the last time we had met, there was an announcement that I made for a missing middle. Conference, I don't know, it was a forum in Kenmore at City Hall, I attended that, and there is a pretty well-attended crowd there. There is a mix of developers, local developers, architects, planning commission members from city of Seattle, regional. Arch was there, so regional bodies, too. Learned a lot about missing middle, and how sort of the economics kind of work into that, so it was really interesting. I can forward some more information to you if you want. And then I also went to Tacoma for one day of the planning conference, that was really enlightening. I learned a whole lot about so many different things, but just maybe two highlights. One was about. I went to more things on missing middle, and so I'm really hyped up about that. But looking at how certain jurisdictions approach missing middle housing, in attempt to not just push townhomes, which is, I think, kind of an easy, easy way to, to, I mean, infill develop, approach infill development. The other thing that I went to was a session on the MFT, multi-family tax exemption, which we had discussed very briefly, and was, our discussion was limited to location, but the city of Redmond is doing pretty amazing things with that program, they also have a requirement for. Affordable. Multi-family housing, and over the past, I think it was ten, or maybe it's been more than ten, maybe fifteen or twenty years, they have had over five hundred applications, and they've processed five hundred new multi-family affordable units, whereas. A lot of the other jurisdictions had just approached it with MF, MFT, and like they're getting maybe five a year. So I thought that was really enlightening, and it was really cool to see what other jurisdictions were doing, and I talked to so many different people and planners, and. It was just a really great thing, so I encourage you next time it comes around, go. Thanks.
Thanks, Carson.
Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, Commissioner Curd reminded me that one other bit of news related to missing middle. We got notice today from Department of Commerce that our grant application was approved, so we'll be receiving fifty thousand dollars from the state. And our proposal is to do two things to our code, which will help implement our affordable housing strategy. One is to increase the number of lots in a short platform from four to nine, which is the maximum allowed interstate law. That's been in our docket for a while, so this will allow us to move forward and get that done next year. The other, though, more specifically to the missing middle, has to do with allowing duplexes on corner lots and single-family subdivisions. So that's the other item that we'll be bringing forward to the council as a docket item for 2020, which is also in our housing strategy, but it's not something that we've had a lot of discussion so far with council about, so we'll be introducing that when we talk to them about the docket. So that's something that we'll be discussing with you in terms of the docket as well.
Okay.
We do have funding to do both of those now, so that was some good news today.
Okay, great. Excellent, thank you very much, that's, that's really good news on that award of money, that's always nice. And just if anybody's still up this later, thanks to all the people who voted in the election. Good luck to all the candidates who are running, and thanks to everybody who ran and who helped those people run, so. A motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned.